It's 2:00 PM on Thursday, August 19th, 2021, and I'm calling to order the monthly meeting of the Lakeville Library Board of Trustees. We have at the meeting Nancy Lefave and Patrick Marshall, who are library trustees. I am Ruth Gross. I'm the chair of the trustees. We have library director Jamie Baveros. And from Lake Cam, we are joined by Kevin Rutledge, who will be recording and live streaming this meeting. In accordance with the provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the August 19th, 2021 public meeting of the Lakeville Library Board of Trustees will be held remotely. However, to view the meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. And you do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later time So, welcome, everyone. We'll begin with the secretary's report, and I'd like to entertain a motion to waive the reading of the report and go ahead to voting on accepting.
I move.
Do you hear a second? Nancy, would you like to second that?
She's muted.
Nancy, can you unmute?
It was barking dogs. Yes. You didn't hear me make the move.
Okay, we have a motion. Can you second that, please? Okay, so we will vote then to accept the minutes as written. Nancy? Aye. Patrick?
Aye.
And I will vote aye and will move along to the financial report. Jamie?
I provided you the most recent budget report for fiscal '22. At this point, we're only a couple, not even a couple months, about six weeks into the new fiscal year. But we have had, you know, we've done some payroll expenditures as well as expense line bills. I really don't have too much to report since we're really so early in the year. I guess the only thing to have you note is the dues and subscriptions pretty much is almost expended out, but that's typically what happens for our budget because that includes the sales assessment that happens at this time of year. So it recently went in. And so that line, really, we almost expend all of it. We'll have a couple of other bills that will come out of that before the end of the year, but I'm not concerned that it's already at 91% just because that's typical behavior for us. So there's really nothing of concern for the budget so far.
Telephone, I see that's at 15%. Jamie, is that normal, too?
That's, yeah, we're at about, we just did two months. So I think the way that our date falls, we've already paid a second bill out of that. And really, the thing to watch for, I guess, is as long as everything is under the director line, because that's the only line that really gets expended out all the way in even increments, as long as the percentages are less than that, it shouldn't be of concern. But, yeah, and the office equipment R&amp;M also has the PC support bill. That's like a one-time-a-year for computer maintenance for all of the computers, public access, OPACs, and anything that we have in terms of equipment comes out of that, but it's a once-a-year payment. So, but, yeah, there's nothing else.
Any other questions for Jamie on the budget? Okay, hearing none. Thank you for that, Jamie. We'll go on to the business. Would you like to tell us about your director's report?
Sure. So, you know, we're wrapping up summer here at the library. So Ms. Teresa wrapped up another successful, albeit modified, summer reading program this year. So she hosted a number of activities outdoors, including a few performers. So we had Mad Science join us and a large crowd for Toe Jam Puppet Band last Monday. It was a nice closing event. The weather was perfect. And so, you know, it was nice to see activities happening again outside safely. You know, and she also offered in-person crafts for teens, take-and-make kits for families, and a few other interactive posting activities on Facebook. So Outdoor Story Hour certainly drew a crowd this summer. You know, with the busiest session being the For and Older that took place on Wednesday mornings. Nancy might actually be able to attest to that. Good crowd. So I do want to say, you know, we appreciate Ms. Teresa's grit for working against the elements to offer this programming for the community this year. It was a hot summer. And, but people seem to really appreciate being able to come back in person together outside. And I just want to, you know, publicly acknowledge and thank her for that extra effort to do what she does outside. It was a little bit harder this year, but glad to be able to do it for people. She's going to continue outside with the youth programming until the weather won't allow for it anymore. And then we'll have to just reassess where everything is at at that point before deciding a course of action for late fall and winter. So we're thinking we can probably get at least through early October, and then we'll have to go from there. You know, that seems so far out in terms of planning at this point. So, but she's going to try to continue outside. And then if the weather, once the weather stops cooperating, if it's safe to do so, we'll have to coordinate with the health agent on how best to move things inside. But for now, we'll stay outside. And she gave out 50 summer craft kits to go along with each of the story hour themes each week, which was, because normally there would have been an in-person craft, but modified for people to be able to take it home. So our small group weekly activities for adults are going well. They are meeting in person. At this point, we're back to masks in the building, but I think, you know, the groups are relatively small and they're meeting in some of our larger spaces. But we also had a very successful hybrid novelties book group in July. So this involved having some people in person at the library and other folks participating remotely from home. So it was a really interesting test on this. I want to, you know, acknowledge that Lake Cam helped us with this venture. They loaned us a special device called a Meeting Owl. It's a 360-degree camera, and it has a built-in microphone and speaker as well. So it's a little device that we have sitting in the middle of the table that technically joins the Zoom meeting. So you're still having a Zoom meeting, but the people in the room are together. And this device is almost like a participant in the meeting and presents the in-person people to the folks at home. So we have a computer that's running Zoom. There's a large television screen that's on a mobile stand. And the Meeting Owl, you know, with all of that equipment, everyone is able to hear and see everyone else participating in the meeting regardless of location. So it was a really interesting option. The technology that we have works well in the local history room. You know, we still have some work to do on whether or not a hybrid option can be available for the large meeting room. That space is a little bit trickier in terms of getting adequate video and audio going in that space just because it's such a large space with high ceilings. But the Meeting Owl really is built for small boardrooms, so it worked wonderful in the local history room space. We hosted the last of the summer concerts for Lakeville Arts Council on August 3rd. You know, as usual, concerts were well-attended this year. Certainly wonderful seeing people coming together outside again. You know, a welcome change over the same time last year. You know, it was definitely missed last summer. Nancy Ratner, who's a member of the General Society of Mayflower Descendants, and she's a Lakeville resident, she's a snowbird, so she's around here for the warmer months. She offered her expertise this past Monday to a small group of patrons who were curious about the society and also helped guide them through the membership application process. So this is for people that may have been descendants from the original Mayflower. They can trace their family back all the way to 1620. And, you know, as I said, there's always been a small group of people that are interested, and she's part of it and has offered to help people with that process. So we're glad to host her again. We've got a couple of upcoming things for September that we have planned. So there'll be ukulele lessons happening on Thursday, September 23rd. We're gearing this for, you know, ages 14 and up. It's really kind of maybe kids in high school and adults that could come together who want to learn how to try this instrument. So we have a young lady come. Her name is Julie Stupanic. And she shows folks the fundamentals of using this instrument. And I guess by the end of her lesson, you're able to strum out a little tune along with her. So if folks are interested, they can bring their own ukulele if they have one. If not, she does bring a whole set of ukuleles with her, and you can borrow one for the event. We are asking for folks to call to register for that just because we do have to limit it to 24 participants because of, you know, we only have so many ukuleles to go around. Plus, I guess for COVID, we don't want to have too many more than that in the room. On Thursday, September 30th, we're having a program called Carving Out Your Story. We are welcoming back Karen Chase and Andrea Lovett to offer this program to the community. They have been, over the last few years, doing a Once Upon a Generation storytelling program where they invite seniors from the local community and pair them with school-aged children to kind of do a storytelling event. That's happened now for three years, I think, at the library. But what they're doing is they're offering a afternoon workshop to really help people, I guess, how to uncover their stories and learn a little bit about, more about storytelling. So they're going to use story prompts and interactive activities to help people learn the craft of storytelling. And that's also going to be limited participation. So if anybody's interested, they can give us a call to sign up. So that's, at this point, I really only have things planned through the end of September. I'm starting to make a list of what we might be able to do for October. But I'm really looking to, I don't know, I guess, anything that we plan, I have to make sure that we could transition to Zoom if we had to, depending on where things end up going. But, you know, we're going to try to shoot for as much in person as we can, and then we'll adjust if we have to. So that's really all of it for program services collections.
Wonderful. Thank you for cluing us in on everyone and letting us know how hard Teresa worked on that because we really appreciate that. Any questions about programming?
I have a comment. We also want to thank the Lakeville Arts Council for providing the tent that covers center stage where the story, and I think you mentioned it in another meeting, Jamie, but I think it's not, it's appropriate to mention it again. They rented that tent for not only the concerts, which protects the setting sun from hitting all the musicians and vocalists, but also for summer reading program. And with everything else that's been happening because of the years, the year 2021, it's made such a big difference in that whole area. It helped to, there was shade there for some of the trees, but it made it just much more pleasurable for everyone who sat around the edge of the stage, including me. So it was a really great idea. And just aside to the Lakeville Historical Commission and the Lakeville Arts Council, it's going to be talking about a permanent roofing structure for that into the beginning of the planning stages and finding out what would have to be done structurally to the area and everything. So that's something that came up at our meeting, the historical commission meeting last night. And we'll also be talking to library input for that, too.
Yeah, you're right. And we're fortunate to have that space out there to be able to make outdoor programming happen, for sure. So I guess I'll move on to buildings and grounds.
Great.
So the pump on the large waterfall was replaced at the end of July on the 29th. The internal mechanism was damaged. And an issue surfaced with the smaller one while I was away on vacation. It just, I don't know, wasn't running. I have here in my report that a service call has been placed. At this point, they actually were here yesterday and took care of it. Yeah, the whole thing had seized up, so that pump has been replaced. So as of today, they're both working and functioning. But we do have, there'll be an invoice that will need to be paid for the service call and the pump. So I sent that along to you for the visit that was on 7/29. So I don't have the invoice yet in hand for the one that will be coming for the service call yesterday. But, yeah, you can see the amount. That piece of equipment, of course, is not inexpensive, but typically, you have been paying for these costs associated from the waterfall out of the capital gifts fund.
This is the original water. This is the original pumps. We have two original pumps.
Well, the first one, we replaced one when the work was done a couple of years ago. That's the one that was on the big one that it failed. It's got a one-year warranty, of course, and it's two years old. And I did actually ask the technician, like, how long do these typically last? And he's like, anywhere from, could be months to years. It seems like you just don't really know. But their policy is if they put one in, they'll replace it if it fails within the first year. We got two years of service out of it, I guess. So it was replaced. And then the one that was on the smaller one is one of, was the original pump. So we're talking now from 2006, '77. Yeah. So, I, you know, we got two more years of working out of it, but it wasn't too much of a surprise, I guess, that it...
The other issue is that there were certain years where we could not afford to have the additional water expense when we were irrigating as well as providing building water. So we didn't run the waterfalls. So I'm sure that that probably gave us more time on both of the pumps than we normally would have had. So, I mean, we take that into consideration, too. I'd be willing to move that we pay the Earth and Water Inc., the sum of $1,275, which includes the cost of a new pump and the service call. Just aside, traditionally, we have always paid things that were unusual and not within the scope of things that we thought were town-appropriated budget items from that money. And that money is basically just for objects like this. We paid the archaeological fee when we did the first, when we were doing the building site. That came out of that. We put the alarm system in the whole building. That was money that came out of that capital campaign. It was all fundraised money. It was no town-appropriated money in that account. So I feel that we can do this.
Were you looking to do both bills out of that?
Yeah, because I'm anticipating there'll be an exact match to the invoice that is dated from July. There'll be one, probably that will come before the next meeting. I mean, we, if you want...
Can we go ahead and, I mean, the work's been done, so it has to be paid. Can we go ahead and change your motion to paying the bills for both pumps to Earth and Water Incorporated, Nancy?
I could amend the motion. It hasn't been seconded, has it?
Yeah, no, not yet.
Okay. I can amend the motion to read that we will pay this and the next bill from Earth and Water Inc.
And that total?
And then what we probably should do is at the next, the next meeting, that we should vote to reinforce that motion again just because we didn't, we don't know the amount, but we need to have them both running.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second. Jamie, did you want the amount to be up to the $25.50?
Probably not a bad idea. If you, if you wanted to put it on the agenda for next month, then I can give you an exact amount. Because I'm anticipating it would be the same because it's the same exact work that was done each visit, and they installed the exact same pump in it. I'm not anticipating that the price would be any different. But if you're going to have it on the agenda, you could just, I could clarify what the amount is at the next meeting for both invoices.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to pay the bill for both pumps, assuming it will be, what, $26.50?
$25.50.
$25.50. So let's vote on that, please, Nancy?
Yay.
Patrick?
Aye.
And Ruth Gross, aye. Okay, and so next meeting, we will reinforce that vote with the total amount. But let's go ahead and get them paid out of capital campaign or capital funds. Okay. Anything else on building and grounds, Jamie?
The waterfall was the only thing this month.
Okay. Well, everything looks very pretty. The sky's waterfall is helping. But, okay. Friends of the library?
So the friends, the next meeting of the friends is scheduled for Monday, September 13th at 6:00. They're hoping to be able to have a book sale in the fall this year, but we're still working to coordinate a date. I'll also have to work with health agent on any safety protocols that would have to be in place if this is going to occur. And I don't think it's going to be a problematic event because we can, you know, people would be able to socially distance in the room. And at this point, masks are required. But, you know, again, it's, we'll get a date on the calendar, and we'll go from there.
Jamie, is that a Zoom meeting?
There'll probably be a meeting in person. We can have them in the large room. Like I said, unless things degrade between now and then, we can have, they can meet in person because there's only usually, there's less than 10 of them at a typical business meeting, so, or group meeting.
Okay. All right. Anything else within your scope of the director's report, Jamie?
I know, kind of skipped right over all the other things. I wanted to give you an update that the new hire training and staff transitions have been going very well over the last month. So we have the new hires. You know, it's certainly made a difference to the operation to have a full complement of staff on board. And we're working to develop kind of new routines in terms of desk coverage versus time off desk for the other tasks that need to be done. And we're trying to make sure we get down to the children's room to assist in that area as well. You know, it's still a work in progress, but it's going really well. I wanted to let you know that I assisted in the process, the search process for the Assistant Town Administrator position. The new staff person will begin at the end of the month, so that they have made a hire, and she'll be joining us at the end of August. We're having bi-weekly department head meetings with RE. All of the department heads are actually taking place here at the library in the big room just because our space seems to make the most sense to bring people together. And we will also be having a regular monthly check-in, he and I, just to, I don't know, I guess, coordinate in terms of what's happening at the library. Even though I have a report to you as a board of trustees, and we have the monthly meeting, there'll just be some coordination to make sure that, you know, I'm aware of anything that's happening town-wise. And the, the sales director meetings have been taking place on Zoom during the pandemic, but there, we've got our first in-person meeting scheduled in September at the, what I'm calling newly opened branch of North Dartmouth. It's been like a year and a half now. Like, we were supposed to be there probably a year ago. So that will be, it'll be good to see a new library space. And like I said, that, that may have to transition to Zoom when we get there, but we're hoping it still can be in person.
That's really nice. Where is it in North Dartmouth?
It's up on Tucker Road. It's like across the street from where the old branch is. So off of Route 6, there was that, you kind of took a left, and the smaller, original library branch was there. And I think they went just like up the street and across the road piece for the new location. It's not too much further away from where they were before. But, you know, from what we hear, it's a nice facility. The North Dartmouth location was quite small for how many people it was servicing. And they had been working for a long time to put in a new branch and finally got everything put together. But then getting it open has been a challenge, I think, because of the timing. I think COVID and the new opening kind of all happened at the same time. But, as I said, I think they're excited to be showing off their new space to the rest of us in the network.
That's, that's wonderful for them. It'll be their new library for the next, what, 20, 30 years?
We still have people who come in here like, oh, did this building just open? It's like, well, it's actually 15 years old. I know, it's aged very well. Like, people really do think it's still new. And just, I guess, because of the way we keep it, it looks, it's, it's done a good job to still look new.
Are there any boxes piled in the hallway? Some libraries have storage problems and...
No, I mean...
We have storage.
I'm like, we do have some, oh, and there's that pile of stuff behind me, you know?
Not in the main entrances.
No, not in the main entrance, no. Like, in our, primarily in our public spaces, we don't have that issue where things are on top of each other. And, you know, when you can't shelve either, and you're putting books on top of a, I've been in that situation before, where every book you buy, one in, one out. We're doing fine with that. The space really has lasted for the 15 years in the way that it should have.
Okay. Next, next on the agenda is the Great Ponds Gallery, so I'll report on that unless, Jamie, you have something to add. But right now, we have, we're very fortunate to have an artist from New Bedford named Chip Davenport. His work will be up at least until the middle of October. And it is 20 years of his work as a wildlife artist. He is just an incredible photo-quality painter. And if you haven't seen his exhibit yet, please do. You'll, you'd be very impressed. It's, he calls it wildlife art. It is predominantly birds. He's an active bird watcher. And his, his work is just beautiful. He will be having some sort of an opening reception on September 9th from 5:30 to 7:30. And he's very kind and patient and willing to wait until what the health officer will approve at that time. So hopefully, he'll be able to have at least most of his guests inside. And we'll see how much farther he can go than that. But we're excited about actually having a reception of the gallery again. So that's, that's all that's going on. We've got a full slate until, I think, April of 2023, mainly because we have a lot of deferred artists who chose to wait and take a later time. So we're, we're in good shape with our artists, but we will start looking for people to come in. We've just accepted two more applications. So, moving right along with the gallery. Be sure to stop by.
Yeah, people have been offering, you know, like, comments about it, like, as they've gone in to see it and then come over and just make comments on how great it is. Yeah, I know, everything looks really lifelike in the pictures. It's amazing.
He's very talented. Yeah, we're lucky to have him. Next on the agenda is the public access computers. You'd like to speak about, Jamie?
So we are due for replacing three PCs in the children's room. So I gave you the quote, I guess, order form that comes from sales. We ordered... The the quote, I guess, order form that comes from sales, we order our technology through them. They get um, they're participating in a state contract and get a pretty steep discount, we, they are. Off lease machines, meaning that they had been kind of in the business sector before and now. So they're usually about two years old, but they still have plenty of life in them for what we're looking to do. But last, about this time last year or last fall, we replaced the machines over in the adult section. And now we would do the ones in the children's room, so we're looking for three computers in there. Which would be, they're two hundred and twenty five apiece, so it's six seventy five, there's some shipping costs to get them here. The sales install price that you see is really, they do some setup for us to load software that we. Need on there to connect it to our PC reservation system, they also take care of the antivirus and. You know, that software on there to keep the computer safe from any, you know. Things coming in and doing damage and we will also put Microsoft Office on these machines, so that way they'll have that productivity, people can do. Word or Excel, PowerPoint on them, there's a cost for that, we get those. Those office licenses from TechSoup, so they're deeply discounted over what you'd have to pay in retail, TechSoup. Offers them to nonprofits at a, at a very lower, a lower cost than what you'd have to get as a individual person, so all together. To replace those three machines, it would be nine hundred and eighty three dollars and fifty six cents. Typically, when we do technology replacements here at the library, we take those costs out of gift funds. And that's, you authorized that last year for the adults, we did six machines down there, this is three PCs. For the under a thousand altogether.
Do you need a motion from us, Jamie, or? I'll make a motion that we approve the expenditure of nine hundred eighty three dollars and fifty six cents from the gift fund for replacement of. Pretty PCs.
Second.
Okay, uh, any other discussion, questions? Then we'll go to a vote, Nancy?
Yay.
Uh, Patrick?
Yay.
Ruth, yay, okay, and the motion passes, thank you. All right, um, Jamie, do you have anything else?
No, I don't have any, no, nothing else to. Really report for this month.
Nancy or Patrick, do you have anything else to report?
I do, um, just a reminder that the Lakeville Arts and Music Festival is taking place on Saturday, October second. And we are participating as a site, uh, we have this long range, um. Long ongoing agreement with them that they may borrow our white benches. Which are over near the children's area outside near the uh gazebo and they use them around center stage. And also, uh, we save additional parking spaces along our building. And in addition to handicapped, um, we also save them for the performers who are performing at center stage. And then after they leave, they're removed, so they're gonna be cones with their names on them. So at this point, I think there's three, but there may be more, uh, Joanna's gonna get me, I usually do that, so I just get them set up and we put them on cones. So that's happening and we'll just hope it's gonna be a pleasant day.
Yeah.
I know that that day really is all about mother nature and the weather.
Yeah. Okay, uh, anything else? Business wise, social wise? Okay, our next meeting. Which will be September twenty twenty one. And the ninth is the reception. What about the twenty third?
For me.
I'm fine with me.
Okay.
Patrick? Two o'clock?
If we're doing Zoom, two o'clock is fine for me.
Okay.
Yeah, honestly, all of the boards and committees really are being encouraged to have Zoom meetings unless they. Really need to meet in person, so I know it's kind of continue. With it in this way, but.
I told, I had told Jamie that if we're doing Zoom, the two o'clock's are fine, the meetings don't tend to pass too too long if. If if and when we get to in person and.
Sure, we can make changes. Cuz we've met all different days of the week and all different times and so. We reflect.
Okay, then, um. Two o'clock on September twenty third, which is a Thursday for our next meeting. And I will, unless there's anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And we'll vote, Nancy?
Yay.
Patrick?
Hi.
And I'm in favor, so we are now adjourned at. What time do you have?
Two thirty six.
Two thirty six, okay, the meeting's adjourned.